We stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Jones.
Counselor Geisler.
Here.
Counselor Jelly.
Here.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Here.
Mayor Boucher.
Here.
Uh, announcements, do any counselors have announcements to make at this time?
Uh, I, oh, I do, I just want to say a quick congrats. I think we sent three youth baseball teams to the state tournament last week and one team ended up winning it, so congrats to them.
Anything else from council? I wanted to point out, we have National Night Out tomorrow night. The blood drive is from two thirty to six thirty, but the National Night Out is from four to seven at the Fairholme next door. All of our public safety personnel will be present. Uh, I hear there are hot dogs and brats, some pizza and all kinds of other good things. It's a great thing to attend. Public hearing, uh, public hearing on a proposed tax abatement by the city of Hermantown, Minnesota with the intent to issue general obligation bonds. Mr. Mulder?
So tonight you have a public hearing, um, on the issues of, uh, creating tax abatement, uh, for certain properties. Um, and the reason we do this is this gives you the bonding authority to, or authority to issue bonds, um, for the arena, which will, um, be tax abatement bonds, but we will then cancel the abatement and pay those bonds back with, um, the private donations that, um, we are, um, receiving from the Arena Legacy Fund, the Arena Board, and haha.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on this public hearing and resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one twenty-five? If you have any public input, you could step forward to the podium and state your name and address.
Well, my name is Mike Sweeney. I live at forty-nine thirty-four Red Oak Circle. Um, I guess the reason I'm here, I, I don't know, as a, I, I, I've been a taxpayer in Hermantown for twenty-five years. Um, rarely do you get a chance to vote about taxes. Well, I voted, I got to vote on the referendum, the sales tax referendum that had three components to it. And one was for the sheet of ice, one was for Fichtner Fields, and one was for the trail system. Um, this was not to exceed twenty million dollars, the way I understood it. Uh, I believe that eleven point two million was going to go to the sheet of ice and the trails and the Fichtner complex would get the rest. Well, I, I'm kind of thinking, well, those numbers seem a little disproportionate, but you know what? That's okay. I can live with that. Well, the last school board meeting I went to, it was, don't quote me on my numbers, but it was something to the effect of, well, they have twenty-four million secured and their need, they need another five point nine million. Is that, I'm, I'm assuming that's what this abatement is, is for? No? I, I don't, I've never heard the word tax abatement before.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Mulder will explain the, the process, but it's part of a whole funding package and we need to abate properties to get the authority to issue bonds, but the bonds will be paid for with contributions later. Mr. Mulder?
So just going through the numbers a little bit, the, uh, project budget is twenty-four seven hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for the, for the arena. We have, don't quote me on the numbers, but pretty close. There might be some rounding errors here. Uh, ten point eight of that is sales tax. Um, we have seven point four seven five, um, from the state of Minnesota through bonding. So that is just under eighteen million, right around eighteen million. And then the remaining five point nine is, um, various naming rights and fundraising. So, for instance, um, one point six of it is coming from, uh, North Star Ford for the naming of that. The Arena Board has pledged a million dollars over twenty years. The Hermantown Arena Legacy Fund has pledged one point four million that they would raise, or one point five, and then haha was going to generate one point five. So between one point five, one point five and one, that's five million, and then you have the, um, one point six from the arena. So all of that money that is being privately raised, we don't have authority to issue taxes for donations or to issue bonds that are going to be funded by donations. So what we do is we identify properties whose taxes would cover that, um, um, debt service. And we say, we're going to use just their taxes for this debt. But because we're getting the donations, we basically cancel that abatement of their property taxes and we use the, the, the private donations instead.
Okay. I, thank you. I, I, I think I, I think I understand it.
The word tax abatement always is a little bit confusing because it makes it sound like you're canceling their taxes and they won't pay any taxes at all. That's not, that's not what tax abatement is. Tax abatement is, what you do is you identify the taxes that that property is paying, and then you say that is going to be used for a specific purpose and won't be used for the general fund. But in this case, we, we say we're going to issue the debt based upon the tax abatement, but we're going to cancel the abatement and use, um, private sales tax, private donations to pay for the debt service.
Well, I gue- I guess my next point is this, I think you said seven point seven came and it's not the ten point eight, seven point seven came from the state again.
Yes.
All of that money have to be spent at the arena.
Yes.
You
Yes.
That couldn't be split up between the three.
No.
We, we had to ask for a specific project.
Oh.
And that's where the shortfall was the greatest, was at the arena.
Okay. Um, I guess those are my, my two biggest. I know that people have spoke, you know, people have spoken, I think at city council meetings, according to Jason, newspaper, um, about some core elements missing in the hockey arena. And I wasn't at that meeting and I'm not sure what the specifics of those core elements that were lacking are. My feeling as a taxpayer is eleven point, or ten point eight million dollars. Holy smokes. That should cover just about everything, I would think, for a sheet of ice. Um, and then another seven point seven. I, I just, I, I just want to talk about core elements a little bit. My daughter happens to be on the Hermantown swim team. Well, core element, number one, we don't have a pool. For swimming, that's, I would consider that to be a core element. Uh, we have to go to Proctor. That pool was built nineteen forty-one. The pool is only four lanes. It's not deep enough. Um, and it's five yards too short. To me, also, there's no electronic timing devices or scoring scoreboard. Uh, those are core elements too. And I just feel when I, when I voted as a taxpayer, yes, yes, yes. Um, I, I didn't know that this was going to be a thirty million dollar sheet of ice. I thought it was going to be eleven point two million dollar sheet of ice and everybody else gets what they get.
So did we.
And as a taxpayer, I, I, I don't know what the technical term is, but I, I kind of feel like I was bamboozled. And I don't know, I, I get, I get all the flyers, you know, we're gonna, whoops, I'm sorry, we're gonna build a, an arena to, so that our, oh, I got the quote here, so we don't have to push our families to rinks outside of Hermantown for practice. Well, now we're at twenty-nine point some million dollars and I, I just, as a taxpayer, that's not what I voted yes for. I voted yes for eleven point two million dollar sales tax. Had I known that this project was going to be thirty million dollars, I may have voted differently. I, I, I don't know. But I, I think that taxpayers, I can only speak for myself, kind of feel like I, I wasn't given the whole, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, I guess, is the way I feel about it. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other public input on the tax abatement and resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one twenty-five? Anyone raise their hands online, Joe? Any one wish to speak on the tax abatement and the resolution approving property tax abatement for certain property located in the city of Hermantown? This is the last opportunity to speak at the public hearing. With no more public input, we will close the public hearing and move to resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one twenty-five, a resolution approving property tax abatement for certain property located in the city of Hermantown. Do we have motion? Motion by Counselor Geisler to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Jones. Roll call, please.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Counselor Jones.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Uh, next, under Communications, correspondence twenty-four eighty-six through twenty-four ninety-three are placed on file. Mr. Mulder, could you give us a brief synopsis of the presentations?
Sure, uh, Brandon Holmes, our billing official, started with just some, um, city maintenance issues, well, took to some of our city buildings and the need to develop, uh, um, kind of a comprehensive maintenance plan, so he is working on that. Um, I gave just a brief update about, um, our budget process. We're a little bit behind schedule, but we're going to try to make that up in the next month. We will make it up in the next month because you have to approve the preliminary budget on August, or September sixteenth. We're going to have to go through, uh, the budget, um, and, and do a lot of cutting, um, and, um, reducing some of the CIP requests.
Thank you. Uh, next is public discussion. This is the time for individuals to address the council about items not on the agenda. We ask that you limit your time to three minutes per person. If you're, if you wish to speak on an item on the agenda, there will be a public discussion opportunity at that time. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to general public discussion? If anyone does wish to speak to general public discussion, please start with your name and address, either online or approach the podium. Last opportunity for general public discussion. We'll close the general public discussion and move to the consent agenda. And, uh, we had discussed in hastening business and getting things moving faster, we are going to move resolutions two thousand twenty-four dash one thirty-six through two thousand twenty-four dash one sixty to the consent agenda. These are all approval of contracts for the North Star Arena. And does anybody wish to speak to those uh, motions at this time? Is there any public discussion on adding those resolutions to the consent agenda? Last opportunity for the consent agenda and the addition of two thousand twenty-four, one thirty-six through one sixty. Hearing none will close that. Do we have a motion for the consent agenda including two thousand twenty-four dash one thirty-six through two thousand twenty-four dash one sixty? Motion by Counselor Jones, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor LeBlanc. Roll call, please.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Counselor Jones.
Aye.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Next is two thousand twenty-four dash one twenty-six, a resolution approving the employment of Chad Rancetti as the Economic Development Director. Do we have a motion?
Do approve.
Motion to approve by Counselor Jones, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Geisler, Mr. Mulder?
So, um, last year during the budget process, we approved the, um, position of Economic Development Director and we waited until the second, um, quarter to start that, beginning that advertisement process. So, um, we interviewed eight people. Um, interview panel was consisted of myself, Joe Wicklund, in some cases we had, um, Steve Overham and Heidi Tembeju, um, in the interviews as well. Um, we interviewed eight people. Um, clearly there was one candidate that, uh, I always like to make the joke was, um, did pass the shampoo test, was head and shoulders above everybody else. Um, and so our recommendations that we would, um, had hired Chad Rancetti for this position. Chad will be an excellent, uh, uh, addition to staff, um, and this is a, a very good thing for the city of Hermantown. Chad is here if you want to, um, have him say anything. It's up to you.
Thank you. Any comments from council?
Welcome.
Anything else?
No, I'm excited for the addition.
Um, you know, we've, we've worked with Chad, uh, as a former planning and zoning commissioner, was it, or was it?
Heda.
Heda. And, uh, Chad has been extremely involved in the city of Hermantown until about a year ago when he, uh, he did have to back away from that. And I think it's, uh, I don't know who the other people were, but I believe this is the best possible choice. Is there any public input on this motion? And Chad, if you'd like to speak during the public input, you're welcome to.
Uh, Mayor Boucher, counselors, uh, and city staff, I'm extremely excited to be coming and to be serving my hometown of Hermantown. Uh, the staff to this point have built a tremendous foundation for economic development. And I'm really excited, uh, to put the structure on top of it. So, uh, I'm really looking forward to working with all of you uh, and really looking forward to continuing the work that we started on Heda and, uh, helping to create the next chapter for Hermantown. So, thank you again for, for having me.
Thank you. Welcome.
We got a vote yet?
We what?
You said welcome. I said we got a vote yet.
Yeah, welcome to the building then. Okay, um, any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one twenty-six? Last chance for public input on the resolution approving the employment of Chad Rancetti as the Economic Development Director. Anything online, Joe? Roll call, please.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Counselor Jones.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Next, resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one twenty-seven. Resolution approving a special use permit for the construction of a two-family home, twin home in an R-three residential zoning district. We have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Jelly, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Jones. Mr. Mulder, would you like Mr. Johnson to?
Yes, please.
Eric?
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and Council. Uh, as you mentioned, this is a twin home, uh, proposal at thirty-eight zero X Stevner Road. Uh, the original eight acres of this whole area had been subdivided off the Bethany Cemetery back in two thousand twenty-two. At that time, the, uh, land was platted as Stevner Woods subdivision. Uh, this is lot eight associated with that subdivision. It's a two point four three acre site, which greatly exceeds the one acre minimum associated with twin homes. Uh, what the applicant is proposing is to build a twin home essentially in the north portion of the property. Uh, there will be some wetland impacts associated with that. So one of the conditions is the, uh, applicant, uh, finalize his, uh, technically evaluation panel within the wetland impacts, uh, from that standpoint. Uh, all the setbacks either meet or greatly exceed our minimums associated with the, uh, twin homes or two-family homes per zoning ordinance as well. Um, at that point, uh, there was a, a public hearing held at, uh, the July planning and zoning meeting. There were no, uh, comments at that time.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on this resolution? Is there any public input on the resolution approving a special use permit for the construction of a two-family home, twin home in an R-three residential zoning district? Any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one twenty-seven? Roll call, please.
Counselor Jones.
Aye.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Next is resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one twenty-eight, resolution requesting advanced funding for the city of Hermantown from municipal state aid funds for SAP two zero two dash one oh one dash zero one four and SAP two zero two dash one oh four dash zero one two in the amount of one hundred, uh, one million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Geisler, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Jones. Mr. Mulder, would you like our city engineer to handle this?
Sure.
Mr. Baldwin, could you explain this to us?
Thank you, um, mayor and council. So this resolution is for one point two five million dollars. Um, we're going to advance that monies that gets deposited in our state aid account. And that helps us to pay for the, um, improvements that we've made on Uggston Road. And, um, it's, it's a reminder that we can, we get seven hundred thousand dollars a year for our state aid account and we're just borrowing ahead. And then in the subsequent years, this, uh, this resolution is in agreement with the state that we will pay back this one point two five million dollars with payments to our state aid account in the, in the future years.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Hearing none, is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input on the advancement of state aid funding for the Uggston Road construction? Is there any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one twenty-eight? Roll call, please.
Counselor Jones.
Aye.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Next is resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one twenty-nine. Resolution approving pay request number three for road improvement district five forty-one and five forty-two to Northland Constructors in the amount of three hundred eighty-three thousand, five hundred sixteen dollars and nineteen cents. Do we have a motion? Move to approve. Motion by Counselor LeBlanc, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Jones, Mr. Mulder?
This is for the work on Hermantown Road for the month of July.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input on pay request number three for road improvement district five forty-one and five forty-two? Is there any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one twenty-nine? Roll call, please.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Counselor Jones.
Aye.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Next is resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one thirty. Resolution approving pay request number eight for road improvement district number five thirty-eight to Yulin Brothers Incorporated in the amount of thirty thousand, nine hundred forty-eight dollars and fifty cents. Do we have a motion? Motion by Counselor Geisler, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Jones, Mr. Mulder?
So, um, this is the pay request for some of the roads being, that had been done in the marketplace last year. We just have a couple of small, uh, punchless items that need to be taken care of. This is primarily, uh, releasing, um, some of the money that was retained as part of the projects who were paying money that is owed them, um, that far exceeds what the actual work that needs to be done.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Any public input on this resolution? Any public input on pay request number eight for road improvement district number five thirty-eight? Is there any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one thirty? Roll call, please.
Counselor Jones.
Aye.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Next is resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one thirty-one. Resolution approving change orders number four and five for Fichtner Park Improvement to Caskey Incorporated in the amount of fifty-six thousand, forty-four dollars. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Jelly, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Jones, Mr. Mulder?
Uh, I'm going to try to explain this and David, you can pipe in if you don't get it quite right. So the first one is, um, adjusting the height, um, the, the building and the, where the bleachers are so that the connection between the bleachers and the press box area is level instead of, um, a difference of about three and a half inches. So just trying to make sure that in for code, for code issues, is to make sure that that's an even, um, transition from the bleacher section to the building. Um, part of that comes in because of the shop drawings came, or the bleacher system came after we had, uh, finalized the plan and started the, the construction process. The second one is for, um, replacing some, uh, fill. As they were digging some of that up, they found some rock and some cement that we didn't want to put back in the ground, um, and replace that with, uh, clean fill, clean granular fill so that, um, we don't have to worry about any settlement issues, uh, on the park.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council?
I just wanted to get a little bit of an update, didn't talk about it, uh, at the pre-agenda, but how's the progress going on that project? Is it keeping up or anticipated, uh, schedule of the artificial turf going in?
So, um, the, the last construction meeting that I was at was, uh, two weeks ago because of my vacation, but we, um, they are a little bit behind because of weather, because of some, and, you know, we've got five change orders in front of us. Um, and that has, has pushed them a little bit. Um, so they are not on the schedule that they proposed. Um, our main goal is to get field one complete. We have been in contact with the, um, vendor that's going to be doing the turf and they are scheduled, I believe the, they're penciled in for the second week of September to do that. They, Caskey has a quite an increased, um, workforce out there since the building has gone up. Um, so th- they've been attacking it a lot harder in the last three weeks than, um, prior. And now that they've, um, got out of the ground, you know, got some good sand and, um, getting out of the rain, they've been making a lot of progress. So we, we are on them daily and a reminder, I, I have an inspector out there that's full-time. Trent and I are out there occasionally, Paul is, and so is Brandon checking in on the building. So we're, we're very aware of the schedule and, um, we're doing everything we can to keep them as fast as I can do this.
Thanks.
Any other questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input on the resolution approving change orders number four and five for Fichtner Park Improvement to Caskey Incorporated? Is there any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one thirty-one? Roll call, please.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counselor Jones?
Aye.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye.
Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one thirty-two. Resolution approving bids and awarding contract to J M F Construction Incorporated for Benson Road Improvement Project in the amount of eighty-six thousand, nine hundred sixty-one dollars and eighty cents. Is there a motion?
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion by Counselor LeBlanc, second by Counselor Geisler, Mr. Mulder?
So this is for the culverts that we've talked about, um, that were failing on Benson Road. Um, and then we'll also extend, um, the road, um, a little bit at the property owner's request.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Is eighty-seven the total amount of the project or is that just the city's portion?
That's the total amount of the project and we'll get reimbursed a portion of that from the landlord. We have a agreement in place.
Any other questions? Is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one thirty-two? Last opportunity for public input on the resolution receiving bids and awarding contract to G M F Construction Incorporated for the Benson Road Improvement Project. Roll call, please.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counselor Jones?
Aye.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye.
Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one thirty-three, resolution approving pay request number one for the North Star Arena to Kraus Anderson Construction Company in the amount of one hundred thirty-eight thousand, six hundred fifty-seven dollars and twenty-nine cents. Is there a motion? Motion by Counselor Jones, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Geisler, Mr. Mulder?
This is, um, pay request number one for the work that was done during the month of June after you had awarded, uh, that first bid package.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Hearing none, is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input on resolution proving pay request number one to Kraus Anderson? Any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one thirty-three? Roll call, please.
Counselor Jones?
Aye.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye.
Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one thirty-four. Resolution approving pay request number two for the North Star Arena to Kraus Anderson Construction Company in the amount of ninety thousand, eight hundred fifteen dollars and thirty-one cents. Is there a motion? Motion by Counselor Jones, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Jelly, Mr. Mulder?
So this is the pay request for the work that was done in the month of July. Um, the reason you have two of them is because, um, the, the June one had come just after, uh, we had the agenda ready for the last meeting and we were working out just some of the process in terms of, um, John will be happy to know that, um, they're requiring the architects to sign off before we approve the pay request and they hadn't submitted a signed pay request, uh, prior to that. Now, the schedule should be is that you have a pay request at the first meeting of each month now until the project's completed.
Thank you. Is there any council, uh, questions or comments on this? Any public input on this resolution? Any public input on pay request number two for the North Star Arena to Kraus Anderson? Any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one thirty-four? Roll call, please.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counselor Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye.
Final resolution is two thousand twenty-four dash one thirty-five, resolution authorizing and directing mayor and city clerk to execute and deliver an agreement for materials testing services for the Herman Town Ice Arena. We have a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion by Counselor LeBlanc, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Jones, Mr. Mulder?
So this will be part of the soft cost of the arena is a contract that we have with this independent testing agency to make sure that all the material that is being done is, you know, compacted right and it's meeting all the specifications. So this is kind of a quality assurance thing. This is part of our soft cost. It's included in that soft cost budget. I will note that I'm going to make a note for future agendas that we are consistent in what we call it, whether it's, we'll call it the North Star Ford Arena and not the Herman Town Ice Arena. So we'll be more consistent going forward.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one thirty-five? Any public input on the resolution authorizing uh, the agreement for material testing services? Last opportunity for public input on resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one thirty-five. Roll call, please.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counselor Jones?
Aye.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye.
And Mr. Mulder, do we have need of a closed session this evening?
Do not.
So I would entertain a motion to recess. We have a motion? Motion by Counselor Jones, we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Jelly, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side?